All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Village of Bartlett. We have a hybrid meeting for those of you that aren't sure what's going on, but there are some of our trustees that are Zooming online and a couple of us present. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for July 21st, 2020. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Present.
Daney?
Present.
Gabrenia?
Present.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here. We have requested that Pastor Mike Boyle from the Village Church of Bartlett do our invocation this evening. Pastor Boyle, thank you for being here.
Just on a personal note, I just want to thank you for the privilege of doing this and be able to lead you in prayer and just assure you of our prayers on an ongoing basis for you, especially with the passing of my camera over the last month and all, and the prayers have been there for you.
Thank you.
Let's bow for prayer. Lord, we give you thanks for your strength and help in our daily lives. I give you thanks for our mayor, the trustees, and the staff, who give their time, service, and sacrifice to serve the people and the businesses of our community. We thank you for your encouragement and direction for these men and women during this COVID time. Lord, I ask your ongoing protection for their health and leadership in the days ahead. Be the one to come in alongside them to comfort and help them in their own lives of trials and testings, and in the same way, come alongside them as leaders in our community to provide for them the wisdom, direction, and help they need in making decisions. As I lead, Lord, let them sense your direction to provide a tranquil and quiet life for people, able to navigate the difficult times we live of constant pressure from people to serve their own personal interest. So guard their hearts and seek your will and give direction that would bring honor and glory to you. And, Lord, how good that we have preserved our freedom to worship our Lord Jesus Christ, who died and was raised again, to give us eternal life through our faith in Him. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Boyle.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sounds a little hollow when not everyone are here. Brings us to our consent agenda this evening. All items listed on the agenda with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on items on the consent agenda. That being said, does anyone on the board wish to add or remove any item from the consent?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item B1 to the consent agenda, if possible.
Does anybody have any discussion around that? And I'll pause a little bit, just so people that are online sometimes get caught up. Does anybody have any issues with adding More Dusty, More Dusty to consent?
No.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda. The amended consent agenda will include the minutes, board and committee minutes from July 7, 2020, the bills list from July 21, 2020. The consent this evening will be adding item B1, an ordinance approving an amendment to the real estate sale and purchase agreement between More Dusty LLC and the Village of Bartlett. The consent this evening will also include B2, a resolution approving of the listing extension agreement to the exclusive right to sell contract between the Village of Bartlett and SBN Landmark Commercial Real Estate LLC. The consent this evening will also include items under Finance and Golf C2 and C3. The consent this evening will also include items under the Public Works Committee, items F1, F2, and F3.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to our treasures report this evening. I believe our treasurer is on the Zoom call. Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Wallace. Today's packet is our treasure report for the month of May. I just want to make one note in regard to our revenue sources and pandemic. I know it's been in the news that a lot of local towns are suffering. Overall, our local revenue has been holding up pretty good. The one area is our income tax sharing from the state. For the month of May, we received $415,000. That was down from $827,000 last year. So we're down about 50% or $412,000. That was mainly due to the extension of the April 15 deadline. So June, July income tax receipts were pretty even, based on the state is saying that that's just from taxes being filed later. And also, the $600 extra a week in unemployment is also taxable that has been keeping us even. So so far, we're just around $400,000 short on income taxes year-to-date. Otherwise, we are doing pretty good. As far as sales tax goes, we received $160,850 compared to $156,194. So that was for February activity. It was actually up $4,656, or 3%. Moving forward, we've been down about 3% in sales tax for March activity and April activity, so that's been holding pretty good. Motor fuel tax, we received $122,000 overall compared to $91,212 last year. Now, the MFT portion was $73,201, so that was down about $18,000 compared to last year's MFT distribution. $49,000 was received from the renewal fund. Going forward, MFT has been short about $20,000 a month compared to last year. So that's it for the treasure report, unless there's any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Brings us to our presidents' report this evening. We have a special president's report. As you might have noticed or might not, I want to thank all the trustees and myself. We all wear blue today in support of our wonderful police force, coordinated by the one and only trustee Daney, I believe. But that's in support of our police force. And with that, we have a Kalia Award, and I will turn it over to Chief first, or Larry. This is actually, not too many of you know him because he stays behind the scenes a lot, but this is Larry Pintzak. He's our accreditation manager for Kalia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As he said, I am Larry Pintzak. I am the accreditation manager for Bartlett Police Department. I've worked here at Bartlett for the past year and a half as the accreditation manager. I'd like to speak to you briefly about what accreditation is and what it means for our village and the police department. We belong to an organization called the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, better known as Kalia. Kalia was created in 1979 as a credentialing authority for police departments across the country. In the 1960s and 1970s, with all the social turmoil in America, it was believed that police departments should set a goal to become more professional by being better educated, better governed by rules, and better managed. At that time, there was no professional credentialing in law enforcement. Several major law enforcement organizations got together and formed Kalia. They developed a manual of professional standards, which member agencies were expected to follow and be assessed on. Bartlett Police Department joined Kalia in May 1995 under Chief Dan Palmer. We achieved our initial accreditation in November 1997, and since then have reaccredited seven times. The accreditation process includes a complete review of our policies and their compliance with Kalia standards. We have to provide annual proofs of compliance for each standard. Currently, there are 459 law enforcement standards, of which we are required to comply with 392. Some standards do not apply to the functions of the Bartlett Police Department. During the final year of each accreditation cycle, we receive a four-day visit by trained Kalia assessors from other parts of the country, who review our policies, interview key department members, village officials, and persons outside the police department to ensure we are following the standards. This site-based assessment process also now includes in-depth examinations of areas of focus decided upon by the department and the assessors. Their written report is forwarded to Kalia for review by a committee of Kalia commissioners. We are then required to attend a Kalia conference and appear at a hearing before Kalia commissioners. This hearing lasts about 20 minutes, and if we successfully complete the hearing, the commission makes a motion to accredit us. Our last assessment process was in 2019 and concluded with our attendance at the Kalia Conference in Covington, Kentucky in November. We now are in the first year of our new assessment cycle, which will involve annual web-based reviews by a Kalia assessor and a site-based visit by assessors in July of 2023. Our work to maintain accreditation never stops. This is a rigorous process, and, I would like to point out, is a voluntary process. Only between 3% and 4% of law enforcement agencies in the United States choose to join Kalia and subject themselves to the regular outside reviews, policy updates, and considerable expense involved in becoming accredited. Currently, there are close to 1,000 police departments in the United States, Canada, Mexico, and the Caribbean that are Kalia clients and are either seeking accreditation or maintaining it. In Illinois, there are only 48 Kalia-accredited agencies at this time, and seven more are in the process of seeking accreditation. One measure of how important it is to be accredited is the risk management it provides to a police department. Having current, well-written, and well-trained policies help us reduce liability. The Village of Bartlett's Risk Management Agency, Irma, recently awarded us a grant to help reimburse our expenses for membership in Kalia, as Irma recognizes how important it is to have strong policies and practices. Another example is during the recent civil unrest in America and the focus on law enforcement use-of-force practices, the Bartlett Police Department had already been in a review process for its use-of-force policy for many months, as a result of updates to the Kalia Standards Manual. We had earlier recognized the need for language related to de-escalation, chokeholds, and duty to intervene. We were able to finalize and issue our policy in June. Even then, Kalia is reevaluating its standard language in these areas and may enact changes, in which case we will have to adapt our policy again. Kalia always wants its standards to reflect best professional practices, and this is an evolving process. Finally, I would like to encourage anyone who would like to learn more about Kalia or how Bartlett Police Department complies with Kalia standards to view the Kalia website at kalia.org, the Bartlett Police webpage on accreditation, or by contacting me directly. My information is on the Police Department Kalia page. And I think now I'll turn it over to Chief Ulrich.
Thank you, Larry.
Good evening. I'd just like to start by thanking the village board for continuing to fund Larry's position and providing the funds for us to continue our Kalia reaccreditation. I'd also like to thank you, Mayor, and you, Madam Administrator, for attending the Kalia Conference with us and sitting through the hearing to hear what it is we go through and what the Kalia assessors had to say about our department. And I really need to thank Larry. Larry started with us in January of 2019, and our onsite was in July of 2019. So he took over for Nora Ackery, who left us in a really good position. She was one of the best in the business, and she went out and actively recruited Larry. And I'm so thankful we have him because he's done such a great job and got us through our onsite and is now moving into the next edition of Kalia, which is the sixth edition. And we have to redo all of our standards and go through all of that and update it. One of the things I learned as a new chief, newer chief, going through the Kalia accreditation process, it was a little nerve-wracking for me going through the public hearing, because it's an opportunity for the public business owners, residents, to come in and say anything about our police department, negative or positive. And, you know, the assessors were a little surprised that 16 people showed up for the hearing, which is a little unheard of. And every one of those 16 people, I'm happy to say, had good things to say about the department. And I think it's just the culture of the department, not only from being Kalia-accredited, but the extent we've gone to, to build positive community relationships throughout the years. And over the 20 years that I've been here, we've been teaching DARE in fifth grade. Then we've started a Citizen Police Academy. We have a Teen Citizen Police Academy. We've done National Night Out. We also have SROs in the middle school and the high school. We do programming for senior citizens. And I think what we do is we hit every level in different age groups and demographics, so people get to meet us in preschool or fifth grade, and it just continues throughout their lives. And I think that interaction between the community and the police is so important, and I think that's one of the reasons why people were so supportive of us during that hearing. We have the best nationally-recognized policies. Those standards within those policies, we have to prove that we're doing by providing proofs to Kalia to actually show we're doing what we say we're doing. And then we have the training on those policies, on all the tactics and skills that the officers need, that you allow us to do. You provide us the funding and the budget, and I really appreciate that. Last year, we averaged over 13,000 hours of training for our staff. And then we also do all the community involvement and things. And I think that's what makes this department a great department. And I just need to say that I'm so proud of having the support of you, the village board, the administration, and also the work that the men and women of my police department do on a daily basis to go out there and represent the community in the best way possible and abide by those nationally-best standards set forth by Kalia. So thank you, everyone, for your support, and we're proud to have attained our seventh reaccreditation.
Thank you, Chief. And we have a little something... Oh, actually, there is a designation of the reaccreditation, too, right? I don't know if you mentioned that, but isn't it like one of the top positions you can get in a Kalia?
Yes. Thanks for bringing it up. Our award certificate has several designations on it. One of them is Meritorious Accreditation. That means we've been continuously accredited for more than 15 years. The other designation is Advanced Accreditation, where we aim to comply with every standard that's established by Kalia. There's an option to do what's called Basic Accreditation, where you only comply with about 180 standards. But we aim for and achieve close to 400 standards. And finally, the best designation is Accreditation with Excellence. And that is something that the Kalia Commission chooses to award us with. We don't apply for it. We don't get nominated for it. It's up to the Commission to recognize that not only do we achieve the Advanced Accreditation, but we do it in such a way where we're helping out other police departments. We have very clean and well-proven onsite assessments. There's a couple other technical areas that we have to achieve, as far as reporting use-of-force cases that we do. And so achieving Accreditation with Excellence is something rare in the Kalia world. Not too many agencies get that designation, so we're especially proud to have "with excellence" on our certificate. With that, Mayor, I'd like to present you with our certificate, if I may.
I wonder how my picture will look with my mask on. Thank you, Larry. And we're not done yet. That is really cool.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. And we're thanking Larry and Chief for their hard work and the excellence of receiving the accolade and the award and receiving an Kalia accreditation. I think it appreciates it more there. Thank you very much. I'll do this. Yeah, thank you. And for those of you that aren't there, they're pretty humble about the hearing interrogation they put you through. I was in the room, and they asked them pretty hard questions. And we watched several different departments squirming a little bit about hard questions that the panel was asking them about. And it's a learning process, where every department that's in there is learning better practices from every other department. So it's a fantastic organization, and I really applaud your efforts. All right. That does it for the president's report tonight. Does anybody on the board have questions for staff?
I have one thing I'd like to say. And I had notes here, but the mayor basically said what I had written down. As you can notice, that all the trustees and the mayor were all wearing blue tonight. That's in honor of the Accreditation for our Police Force. And we'd all like to thank you for the service you provide for our residents in our community in these unstable times. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
That it? That's all. Wow, that's short for A. All right, anybody else?
Can we talk for a few minutes about Route 59 and Sterns Road?
Sure.
In email correspondence with the village administrator, I was very pleased to learn that our Public Works Department has been picking up the slack for the state and the state contractors by putting together signs in our sign shop to assist our local businesses. So I think they need to be commended for that.
Thank you.
I think that was Dan that said, "Thank you."
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Very good. Anyone else? Thank you, trustee Ranky. That town hall portion of the meeting, anyone that would like to address the board? If you're present, you can step to the podium, state your name and address. If you're not, I will check with our coordinator, Chris, to see if anyone raises their hand on the Zoom if they would like to speak to the board at this time. I don't even know if you can hear us back there.
We have one member of the public that would like to speak, Mayor.
All right. Can they hear me through the Zoom?
Yes.
All right. If you would please just state your name and address and attempt to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Jay Langfelder with 1665 Penny Lane, Bartlett, Illinois. I just want to commend the police department because at Hawk Hollow Monday morning, I was walking my dog, and I noticed graffiti on Hawk Hollow wall. It was the southwest corner of the building, and somebody spray-painted graffiti up and down. They responded. I called 911. The police came out within a half hour and responded. And by the next day, the whole graffiti was removed from the building. But I want to commend the police officer, and I wish I had his name, who responded. But they filed a report. But I want to thank the community, because what's important is to maintain the cleanliness of our community in Bartlett. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langfelder. Chris, let me know if anyone else has a hand raised.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. For those of you at home, I'll say again, as always, if you're having technical difficulties and wanted to say something, please, by all means, you can stop by or contact the village directly, and we can put anything into the record from that. Standing committee reports. First standing committee report is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have nothing under building and zoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both of our items were covered under consent.
Thank you, Chairman Gabrenia. Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Daney.
President Wallace, we have one item on the agenda this evening. It's, oh, it's item C1. It's an ordinance approving the Second Amendment Estimated Redevelopment Project Cost in the Bartlett Quarry Redevelopment Plan. And I'm going to ask Todd if he'd be so kind to give us a little background on what the petition is requesting.
Thank you, Chairman Daney. Yes, back in the committee meeting on July 7th, we reviewed the ordinance approving the amendment to the budget. Originally, in 1999, the TIF budget was for $30 million. That was in 1999. So the TIF Act allows for the budget to be increased by inflation plus 5%. So in 2016, it was increased to $44 million. Right now, the Elmer Chicago Stone developer of the Brewster Creek Business Park, they are seeking an additional reimbursement amount of up to $3 million to complete the cost of the business park. So this Second Amendment to the TIF budget would increase the budget to $48 million, and that's by Consumer Price Index plus 5%. That would allow the developer to complete the project. The main thing that $3 million would do would be to complete site lot number eight. That's where their ready-mix concrete badge plant is, and also final restoration for the facility. Next steps after this, then, would be notify the taxing districts and then amend the redevelopment agreement. Also, we would then issue a developer note not to exceed $3 million. So that's the brief summary on that. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Do you want to read the ordinance?
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. With that, I move to approve ordinance 2020 dash...
62?
62. 62, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment amended estimated redevelopment project cost in the Bartlett Quarry redevelopment plan. Second? There we go.
I'm not sure who that was.
Vince.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, now the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Hopkins?
Didn't hear you.
Trustee Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Need the mayor's vote on that?
For fifth.
President Wallace.
Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Daney. Just to be safe, could I... We have the mayor cast a vote, too.
We have one item on our agenda tonight. Before I continue, I would just like to say again, congratulations to the entire police department. I'm sure that was a group effort. It was a strenuous testing, and you guys came through with flying colors. Again, congratulations to all. We have one item. It's a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for participation in DuPage County Local Government COVID-19 reimbursement program. I move to approve Resolution 2020-64.
No, 63.
63, sorry. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for participation in DuPage County Local Government COVID-19 reimbursement program. And I would ask Scott Skoricki to admonish or embellish on what this is about.
Why don't I get a second? Need a second.
Second.
By Trustee Carbonero, seconded by Trustee Danny. Is there any discussion?
No.
Does anybody have any questions about the redistributions for DuPage?
Okay.
Okay. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
That's all we have on our agenda for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Public Works Committee is open, and all items on the Public Works Committee formerly under Chairman Cameron is all under the consent agenda. So there will be no report from the Public Works Committee. Anybody have any new business they would like to discuss?
I have one thing. I would just like to mention to Trustee Carbonero that his seat is much more comfortable than mine. I normally sit over there. And at the next meeting, I'm taking your chair, okay? So that's all I have.
I would say this will be our last hybrid. I don't believe we'll be approving another one. So be prepped to come in or miss.
Yeah.
And Mayor, along those lines, Mayor, you did do the designation for this meeting to have an electronic forum due to COVID and the ability to attend due to either health concerns or other restrictions.
Yeah. I should have read that at the beginning, but thank you, Madam Administrator. Does anybody else have any open business to discuss or questions for staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonero. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
That's all we have on our agenda for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Public Works Committee is open, and all items on the Public Works Committee formally under Chairman Cameron is all under the consent agenda. So there will be no report from the Public Works Committee. Anybody have any new business they would like to discuss?
I have one thing. I would just like to mention to Trustee Carbonero that his seat is much more comfortable than mine. I normally sit over there. And at the next meeting, I'm taking your chair, okay? So that's all I have.
I would say this will be our last hybrid. I don't believe we'll be approving another one. So be prepped to come in or miss.
Yeah.
And Mayor, along those lines, Mayor, you did do the designation for this meeting to have an electronic forum due to COVID and the ability to attend due to either health concerns or other restrictions.
Yeah. I should have read that at the beginning, but thank you, Madam Administrator. Does anybody else have any open business to discuss or questions for staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonero. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.